We're gonna give it just a minute here to clear out. Alright, we're gonna start the work session. Uh, this is a work session for Monday, October fourteenth, twenty nineteen, Thomas J. Smith Council Chamber, City Hall. First on our proposed, uh, regular agenda is a public hearing for consideration for ordinance amending the section fifty-eight point thirteen, type A permit, general standards of chapter fifty-eight noise control of the Burlington Municipal Code, first reading. Does anybody?
One thing I'll just point out, it's not a formal meeting.
Oh, it's not?
You only have two here. Matt, I don't know if Matt's gonna show up. Annie and Shane are not going to show up.
Okay.
If, if, if Matt makes it here, you'll be able to have a formal meeting, but this'll at least give you a chance to review the items that are on the agenda.
Okay, so we're just reviewing them tonight. Does anybody here to address the noise ordinance?
Uh, that would be you.
Preston to service, Major Grimshaw.
Counsel, essentially, we're proposing a, um, change to the noise ordinance, which specifically is, um, gonna take the type A permit, change the language just a little bit, actually, all we're moving. The type A permit, um, for the sound equipment when an application is made, we're just looking at, uh, adding two hours to that time from nine PM to eleven PM. Other than that, everything's remaining the same.
Pretty much the same?
Yep, exactly the same. We're just gonna take it in that type A.
Okay.
And move it from nine PM to eleven PM.
Anybody from counsel have any questions for Major Grimshaw? We're talking about the noise ordinance.
The only question I've got is for major events, do we make exceptions?
Well, anyone has the right to submit an application, obviously. And then that application will be looked at, hardships either to the person that's filling the application or the residents around, whether it's in a residential, um, you know, what the zoning of that particular property is. So, we'll look at special events, um, we'll look at the length of time, we'll look at what the proposed noise, um, exceedance will be, um, and there can be conditions put with that as well on each application. So, I know there's been a lot of questions about, uh, the changing of the noise ordinance. Uh, particular, um, businesses might wanna have a, uh, an event of some sort, and if they believe that their noise will emit, uh, either in decibels beyond what the current ordinance allows, or a timeframe beyond what the current ordinance allows, uh, that application will be, um, submitted to the city, and then the, um, that'll have a review done. So, I mean, there's a lot of variables, um, that can come about. Obviously, if you're in a, a commercial zone versus a residential zone, there's differences, but, uh, each application will be weighed upon itself.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Me too, I had two questions. Major, so, is it ten decibels, it can't be above? I'm trying to remember what it was.
So, no, it's actually, it's, there's, it varies throughout. It varies, it's actually closer to that, um, anywhere from that forty-five to sixty decibels.
Okay.
Um, but it, it changes based on the time of day. It also changes based on, uh, what the, the zoning is for each area. And so, where that's measured is the amount of noise that's being emitted from the property line, the real property line, and then also the, the decibel readings at the next owner's property line. So, there's, there's, it's hard to answer that question with one answer, because there's multiple different types of zoning, there's multiple different, um, decibel allowances based on the time of day, whether it's during the day or night, so, it, it varies.
And then my, my next question was, is this gonna, in your opinion, pose any hardship to the residents that live around some of these areas?
So, that's what'll be considered, um, by the noise ordinance officer for the city, which is actually the chief, as designated by the city manager. So, when an individual comes in and makes an application to exceed the noise, uh, ordinance, uh, I'll just, I'll give you an example. Um, maybe a restaurant or a bar in Burlington wants to have a band for a fundraiser, uh, and they're gonna hire a band and they wanna do it from seven PM to eleven PM. Well, typically, as the way it reads now, nine PM, you can only go to a certain decibel reading, but if they know they're gonna exceed that beyond nine o'clock, to say eleven o'clock, they'll have to submit an application, then the different city ord-, um, department heads would view that application and determine whether or not there were issues. But specifically, the noise ordinance would look at the application itself, look at, uh, the times that the person is submitting on their application, uh, the type of noise that'll be emitted, and then the noise ordinance officer can either grant or deny that application. But if they do, um, grant the application or approve the application, he can write stipulations into that. So, to answer your question, he's gonna look at the location of the event, the timeframe of the event, and then he's gonna take into consideration, is this in a residential neighborhood? Or a de facto residential neighborhood? If it does, then he may write conditions into that, um, application approval. He may say that you can play beyond nine PM up to eleven PM, but if at any time you exceed the allowable noise ordinance, you'll have to shut down, or if at any time we receive complaints from residences, you'll have to shut down. So, he can write, um, variables into that.
Stipulations into it.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Any, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Major. Uh, the next up is a motion for preliminary adoptions. What's that?
I apologize, I said chief, and I should've said major, so.
I let, I let it slide. Don't retire on us, by the way, Major. Hang in there another few years. Motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance vacating and selling a portion of right-of-way located adjacent to eighteen, fifteen, eighteen forty-five Des Moines Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
No changes from the previous reading. Carly Nelson's requested vacation, um, essentially, since they own all the property around it, their intent is to repave the property, uh, make improvements to it, and they didn't wanna do that unless they owned it, uh, to, I guess, uh, control a, access there a little bit more for their property, uh, still have access to the north, but, um, their intent is to improve, make improvements by paving those alleys.
Okay, good. In fact, I did go down there, and they are working toward that step, so, it should be good. Anybody have any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on to number three, resolution approving the application for funds through the community catalyst building remediation program from the Iowa Economic Development Authority.
Why don't, Eric, you've gotten to work on the application on this, do you wanna talk about what's, what you have and what is gonna be needed on this?
Um, so this is a, a grant, uh, we applied for previously, um, when the individuals were looking at putting a hotel in the, um, former police department station, um, but, uh, through discussions with IEDA, uh, they've allowed an application for Downtown Partners, uh, kinda outside the grant cycle, as long as they can meet the minimum requirements. Uh, it's a hundred thousand dollar, uh, grant through IEDA for improvements to, um, in this case, the typewriter building at three hundred Washington Street. A lot of the background information on the need, um, maybe Steve can d- address more, but it's pretty visible on the street side, on third street side there, uh, shoring up and stabilizing the building to ensure that it remains viable and does not have to be, uh, demolished. But, uh, there's a grant for a hundred, or hundred thousand from IEDA, uh, for the project. It does ask for a city contribution, the grant does go through the city of Burlington. Part of their stipulation that they talked about was, uh, having the ability to sell the building within twelve months to ensure that a hundred thousand dollars, um, so it's something we've talked to Downtown Partners on, is if the city's the applicant, what's the assurance that if it doesn't sell for some reason, that, uh, we wouldn't be on the hook for payback of that amount?
And what's it, what's it, what was the conclusion of that conversation?
This, this is a, as, as he's mentioned, this is a forgivable grant, uh, or forgivable loan, I'm sorry. So, if it doesn't sell within a year, it is a lo-, it's treated as a loan and that's due back and payable from us.
Yeah.
We have asked, and actually, when Downtown Partners, the board approved, uh, making the request for the city to go after this funding source, uh, part of that motion was to, um, receive a letter of credit from a local bank, um, to be able to back us, to assure that we are paid back on that. So, Steve, what's the status of getting that? And then, what's the overall scope? Before you start on that, we had a hundred thousand, it did say that we had to have a local match in it, and you'll see in the resolution, it talks about the city putting twenty thousand dollars in, uh, and that's from the economic development portion of local option sales tax funds. Uh, you've already made a presentation to the Economic Development, uh, Committee, and they have approved this twenty thousand dollar ask. Um, so I guess with that, I'd turn it over to you, and then you have some funds that are going into this too, to make the overall application work.
Sure. So, um, to, to start at the beginning, if you want me to skip over any of this, I will. And I also have Jesse Caston here to kinda talk about, uh, the sale portion of the building, and, uh, his time is limited, so I might ask him to jump in here before I've, uh, talked through the whole thing. So, uh, building is built in eighteen eighty-three, three-story building, top floor added in nineteen oh seven, the top two floors of three hundred Washington have been vacant since nineteen forty-one, when the Hulks Building moved into the next door, which is now the Washington. Was a, a number of different businesses, uh, throughout the years, um, the last one was the typewriter shop, which occupied the, the first floor, they closed about two thousand and one, and the building's been vacant ever since. Two thousand and three, uh, went up for sheriff's auction, sold for a thousand dollars. Um, as far as I know, that owner really didn't do anything with it. Subsequent owner, um, uh, I think was ordered by the city to board up a lot of the windows, 'cause the glass would go flying, so he did that, uh, might've done some roof work as well. And then, uh, the, the media passed owner, uh, when the building was tagged in ninth, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, I think it was, twenty fifteen, uh, October twenty fifteen, uh, as abandoned and unsafe, um, primarily because of roof issues, um, uh, he was not, I, I think, not willing to, to do the work. Offered the city to, uh, give the city the building, um, in return, they would absolve him of any responsibility for cleaning up the, the building, uh, and doing the repairs. Uh, I don't think the city wanted to take on that responsibility, uh, so Downtown Partners stepped in, uh, the city acquired the building for a dollar in, uh, March of twenty seventeen, and we, to run, bought for two dollars. We were the only bidder on that, at the council meeting. So, uh, since that time, we've put about two hundred thirty thousand dollars into the building. Uh, the work that we've done, um, includes, uh, procuring liability insurance, uh, doing lead and asbestos, uh, testing, uh, we remediated, I would probably say ninety-five or more percent of the asbestos in the building. Uh, we have measured drawings done, uh, to aid for future redevelopment, this is something that developers always ask, first question out of their mouth is, do you have drawings? Do you have blueprints? Um, we rebuilt the two, uh, two of the three failing roof trusses, um, that was really the, the principal problem with the building, is, uh, there was a, a roof trust completely rotted through, um, propped up, uh, with a timber on the fourth floor, and, and that was really causing the roof to start to cave in, and causing drainage problems, a lot of water went through that building. Uh, so we repaired two of those trusses, the third one is, is shored up, so it's not moving. Uh, we repaired the leaking interior drain that was causing a lot of those additional water issues. Uh, we did install a brand-new roof, hundred percent new roof, uh, we donated some of the furnishings to hopefully yours, uh, and we cleaned out, uh, a number of dumpsters worth of debris from the building. So, uh, June, about June twenty-first, twenty-second of this year, uh, bricks started falling off the northeast corner, and, uh, I happened to be out of town at the time, so the Downtown Partners, uh, Executive Committee, uh, got together, um, and, and taught to Dick Keith, local structural engineer, what do we do to, to take care of this? DPI is not sitting on, uh, enormous piles of money by any means, um, so, uh, we went out for quotes, um, and accepted a quote, we got two, uh, quotes just to shore up the building, just shore up that corner, not to do the repairs, but just to keep it from getting worse. Went to the Heritage Trust, uh, and they, uh, granted us an emergency, uh, funding, uh, to get that shoring work done. So, we hired a firm, uh, they started doing a little bit of work, uh, started fabricating of some of the materials, uh, and then were called off on another job, and in the meantime, uh, the, the building got worse and worse, to the point where what we'd originally had planned for the shoring wasn't gonna be effective. So, since that time, we've been working with, I think, four or five other, uh, contractors and masons to get some idea, wrap our heads around this project, what's the shoring gonna cost, what is, what's it gonna cost to rebuild this building? At the same time, we did, uh, ask, uh, a demolition contractor for an estimate on what would it cost to demolish the building, and the answer is between four and six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the building is on a sixty-by-ninety lot, uh, that's the exact same size as the lot next door at the Washington, and that lot is, um, valued at eight thousand dollars. So, uh, there's no sense in spending half a million dollars to create an eight thousand dollar lot, uh, and DPI certainly doesn't have half a million dollars. Fortunately, uh, Debbie Durham, the Director of the Iowa Economic Development Authority, uh, was in town, uh, had lunch with Dela Schmidt, our CEO, uh, talked about the issue. Debbie is, is a big fan of Main Street programs, uh, she's a, a, a good preservationist and a definitely an ally to have in your corner, and, uh, as Eric mentioned, uh, IEDA has, has offered us, uh, a one hundred thousand dollar emergency, um, community catalyst building grant to go towards this project. We've, uh, received two, two and a half quotes, um, we are hoping to get a couple more before today, um, just the waiting, it's, it's, talking to contractors is like pushing strings. But, uh, we're, uh, until we get those numbers, we're really not at the point where we can ask local banks to finance either the hundred thousand dollar guarantee to hold the city harmless for repayment of that loan, or for the additional work that we know is gonna be required. Uh, so what IEDA has talked about is, uh, a twelve-month process, um, if the, uh, and the city would be the grant applicant and the grant recipient, it's my understanding, talking to Jim, is we would have a separate agreement with the city, uh, in terms of how that, that project is handled. In the meantime, they need, uh, council approval to, to go ahead, for Eric to, to fill out this application, uh, and for whatever, uh, the grant amount might be. So, uh, twelve months, we know that we're heading into winter, uh, this involves a lot of masonry work, not the ideal time to do this. Uh, I just learned, literally a half hour ago, that, um, the, the state is being very flexible as to when that clock starts. Uh, they are saying, uh, that that twelve-month clock, uh, could start, uh, July first of next year. So, the building project wouldn't have to be completed, um, until July of twenty twenty-one. Their, their contingencies or stipulations are that the, uh, uh, the work is done, and the building is sold to a developer with a plan for occupancy within twelve months. So, that twelve months doesn't start until next July, which is, which is a huge relief for us, because, um, finding contractors, and again, going into the cold season, it's gonna be a little bit of an issue. Um, we've tried to be good neighbors to, uh, the people who own the parking lot to the north, uh, people who own the restaurant, uh, certainly, uh, it's a concern of ours that we've had the sidewalk in the street and the parking blocked off for so long, and we'll be working with, uh, Public Works on that. Um, I've asked Jesse to come here, and I'm gonna take a breath, but, uh, I've asked Jesse to come here, talk a little bit about the saleability of the building. Um, certainly, there are some issues internally and exterior that I think affect, uh, the potential for sale, and we intend to address those, so, Jesse, if you wanna, if, if that's okay with you?
Sure. Jesse Caston, Terrace Real Estate Group. Um, I guess one question that, that I probably should ask Steve, is, does it have a price on the purchase price?
Right now, we have it listed at two nineteen.
No, as far as what they would require within that twelve months? So, they require a sale for a developer, but do they require a dollar amount?
No.
No.
So, it could sell, as long as the developer has a plan, it could sell for a dollar? For that type, okay. As long as?
As long as it put?
As long as the developer puts occupancy in the building in twelve months.
Well, and, and I think Downtown Partners is gonna have an issue just in terms of trying to, and I don't, if you have an offer come through, they're gonna have to figure out what they do, you have an outstanding loan already on this facility, and you'll have the-
We do, I'll talk a little bit about the financial end.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna, uh, see if you guys have questions for me first, before I go into-
What can we realistically sell the building for, assuming the work's done that Mr. Freevert wants to do?
Uh, so I think the big question is, and I don't know if we have our arms totally wrapped around it, is, is this, does this fix the building for sure? So, you know, I think that would be one big question, maybe Steve does know that yet. I know that they've been, you know, working on this to, to make sure, because in order to get a developer interested, obviously, we have to say, okay, we had an engineer sign off on this, this was fixed because of a past issue, but there's no other problems.
Right, but that's gonna be relative to what a person wants to do in there, so again, if we did the work that Mr. Freevert wants to do, what do, what do we have the ability to sell it for, I guess?
So, I don't know what the dollar amount's gonna be. I, you know, I can't say a dollar amount, um, not knowing also what they're gonna have into it, and where, where they're gonna be at financially with it, I guess you can talk a little bit more about that. I will tell you, there is, there is some interest in the building, um, obviously, it's kinda taken a little, um, it, it's taken a backseat, uh, since this, uh, issue with the, with the wall. Will it sell within twelve months? I'm not gonna sit here and say absolutely it will. I, I do think that there's enough interest from developers, we're, we'll, uh, have somebody come forward, but I, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna sell for sure.
Yeah, that would be my concern, is, you know, whether, 'cause it's been for sale for a while already, um, and whether the hundred thousand even touches what it needs to get it ready for sale, so. Well, and the other thing is, I wouldn't be comfortable giving the hundred thousand or guaranteeing the loan without the city being reimbursed, if in the event we had to turn around and write a check for a hundred thousand dollars. So, basically, if we did it, there would have to be an agreement in place that the first hundred and twenty thousand dollars are cooped, went directly back to the city to cover the cost of the grant and the loan that we have paid.
Absolutely. Um, you know, and I guess to answer your question, or not necessarily a question, but comment there as well, so, what people don't realize, this is twenty-one thousand square foot building, uh, you know, so the price is, yeah, two nineteen, but this is probably a, you know, a five-plus-million-dollar project at the end of the day.
Sure, right.
So, that developer's a little bit different than, you know, if people just look at the building, look at the price, somebody could afford to pay that, it's the project after that.
It's the project after, 'cause it's, it's changed hands a couple of times pretty cheaply, and, uh, nothing's developed, that's what my concern would be. And I know they've been active trying to, to market it. My concern is, and I'm sure a lot of people agree, but the city, the city are, is not investors, so, i- if we are guaranteeing loans for the redevelopment of buildings for their sale, then we become an investor, which is why it's important that the city be held harmless in the event, or for when the building's sold.
And may, that might've been the agreement that Steve was talking about, the separate agreement that they would have, which I'm assuming that they would, oh, guarantee that, yeah, that money's-
Right.
I don't wanna speak for Steve, so I'll let you through this question.
So, you're, you're confident that the viability of the building is, uh, is there, and that it can be sold for a reasonable amount to cover whatever the, the, uh, the loan would be, I guess?
The funds from IEDA are forgivable loans, so if they sell it, that's, that hundred thousand is screen cleared.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I'm only worried about in the event that we have to write a check for the hundred thousand dollars.
That's where we've, I, I told Steve that the only, only way that it makes sense, that I can support asking, or recommending that you do this, is if they're backing, if they have backing from a bank, a letter of credit, that they're gonna reimburse us for that hundred thousand, if they don't sell it. Which is part of what is, you, you've, have a couple of different banks, Steve, that you've been trying to talk with, but part of it is getting an idea, it's not, for them, they're looking at not just a hundred thousand with us, but what's the overall project scope? Is it another hundred thousand that you're potentially asking them to write? And I think that's kind of about the, the number that you're after.
Yeah, so I would say, I mean, if you have any, again, if you have any, um, questions about the saleability of the building, um, not be a good time to ask Jesse, otherwise, I'll, I'll go into more detail about the financial part of it.
Okay, I guess that's where I'm at. I, I mean, we have some big, big buildings for sale, most are listed with your firm that I've seen, and so I'm, I'm not sure with it being listed the last, over the last few years. I, um, boy, I don't know if we have someone that's gonna look at it, that to be, not to be a negative person on, on it, but I, that would take a developer that I haven't, we haven't really seen come to town.
But John, I don't, I don't know that it matters, I mean, if, if they can guarantee that they're gonna have somebody that's gonna guarantee us the, on the backend, the hundred thousand dollars.
Then it's their problem, I agree with that.
So, uh, we essentially become a pass-through at that point, and, for paperwork purposes, right?
Correct.
You're a pass-through, but you're also granting twenty thousand from the Economic Development Funds, and that, that's regardless of whether, whether it's sold or not.
Sure, but that's not outside the scope of things that we've done in the past.
Nope.
So, I mean, we've, we've supported the redevelopment of downtown structures, we've supported the redevelopment or development of other buildings or, or ventures, um, that's what that money's there for, so I don't, I don't think that that's outside of the scope, or inappropriate.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Jesse?
I know you guys abated most of their bestest, there's still some, is that, what's, what's the biggest thing? Why is, why is this gem not selling?
Uh, it's scale of the project, I mean, it truly is a scale of the project. I, I can tell you, so I sold the buildings, uh, to Y and J Development, that's doing Mr. Moto's and that, uh, building with it, that was a year of due diligence that they went through. So, when you talk about scale of some of these projects, it takes, I mean, there's gotta be, 'cause they go after whether it's market tax credits, or, um, you know, with this opportunity fund, setting up the fund, so there, it's just, it's time period. So, it's, it's, take, I mean, it takes a, a while with that due diligence part, now some of it has been done with this building, so that should shorten the timeline, but then it's finding that specialized developer that's willing to, to come into the market and say, you know, we can spend that money, and we believe in this market.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, some of those questions I, I wanna address now, so, um, uh, I think, again, I think there would be a separate agreement, uh, outside this resolution between Downtown Partners and the city that would, we would guarantee, uh, to pay back that funding, but again, we, we haven't gone to any banks and asked them for a dollar amount, 'cause we don't know what that dollar amount is. I can tell you, uh, we have a task force that's been working pretty steadily on this. I'm thinking we're gonna land somewhere between a hundred and seventy to two hundred and forty thousand dollars to do all the work. So, that does not just include the, the corner, which is, which is obviously the most concerning. In meeting with Jesse a few times, there's other issues with the building that I think have affected the saleability of it, and, and at this point, we feel like if we can address those additional issues, it's gonna make it much easier to sell. Those three issues, uh, in no particular order, are, um, the remaining asbestos underneath the first floor, uh, that's gonna run about ten thousand dollars to remediate that. Um, the, the third floor trust that is shored up right now, but should be repaired, uh, it's a twenty-two thousand dollar fix, uh, we have received a ten thousand dollar grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation to go towards that, that part of the building project. And then Jesse has also talked about, uh, the second floor of being very problematic. So, the, the second floor of the building back in the seventies or so, uh, was chopped up into a lot of small display rooms, um, with, with, basically, they built, uh, rooms within a larger room, so there's, um, there's walls and a dropped ceiling, um, built within the larger space of the second floor. So, it's really hard to visualize the space, 'cause it's all chopped up. So, um, we've got an estimate for demolishing all that, uh, long-term temporary wall stuff, uh, and getting rid of the debris, and that's about nineteen thousand. So, that's where we're at with those, those three things, if we can get rid of the asbestos, fix that trust, get rid of the, the second floor, um, problems, I think it's gonna make it a lot easier to sell. Jesse has talked, uh, said that when he's bringing potential developers through there, um, we know the trust should be fixed, and we've got ha- almost half the funding for that. We know that the asbestos on the first floor isn't a deal killer, it's, it's, it's not very difficult to get to, and, and again, it's about a ten thousand dollar fix. It's the, really, that second floor is really problematic. So, um, when Downtown Partners approaches area banks to, to, for the financing, think of it as a construction loan, we would like to include those three additional things in this cost, um, because that's gonna help guarantee, uh, that that hundred thousand dollars from IEDA, uh, it becomes a grant and, and doesn't become a loan. So, potentially Downtown Partners is gonna have to go out and, and ask for bank financing for, uh, between a hundred seventy-one and two hundred and forty thousand dollars, hundred thousand of that would be, um, a forgive, the forgivable loan from the state. Um, and again, the fact that this clock doesn't start running until next July, by then, we think all that work could be finished by then, and should be in pretty good presentable condition. Building doesn't have to be occupied in twelve months, it has to be sold to a developer, um, with a plan for occupancy. Uh, and then, um, in terms of the financing, uh, we've put in, uh, Downtown Partners money, um, we've, uh, borrowed sixty thousand dollars from, uh, the Economic Development Division of the Greater Burlington Partnership, uh, which is something that we have to pay back. We've, uh, obtained a grant from the Heritage Trust, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, we got two different grants through Main Street Iowa, uh, a grant from the DNR to take care of the asbestos, um, and, and then, uh, the city's, uh, Economic Development Advisory- the asbestos, and, and then the city's Economic Development Advisory Board's recommendation for 20,000. So we have a lot of partners in this project that have some interest in seeing it happen. And again, half a million dollars to create an 8,000 dollar empty lot, it's, it would be a terrible decision, it's, it's not one that anybody would support financially. There is no way that IEDA is going to create this community catalyst grant, give us 100,000, or give the city 100,000 dollars to tear down a building, that's not gonna happen. And banks certainly aren't gonna loan Downtown Partners half a million dollars to, to tear down this building. I, I feel pretty confident that, given the timeline, given the, the layers of funding, that we can make something pretty good happen here. To give you some idea of why we're approaching this from an economic development perspective, the, the building just a block to the east of there, at, at Main and Washington, it's a little bit larger building, but it's only three stories instead of four, and that building is valued at, what did I say, 379,400 dollars. So there's, there's tax income, property tax income for the city. We know that we've seen a number of buildings lost, and I think you all know I have a reputation as a historic preservationist, and I'm ashamed to say, we've lost 15 historic downtown buildings in the 11 years I've been in this job. It is not a trend that can continue. When we have developers who say they want to come here because we have a great historic downtown, and we're tearing it down at a faster rate than their building buildings, we built two buildings, two new infill buildings to replace those 11 that were lost. It's, that's not the right direction to head in, especially when the great majority of the property tax value per acre in this city is in the downtown. So that's why we see this as, as a win-win for, for the city, for whoever ends up being the developer and, and the occupants of that building. And Downtown Partners, you know, we're not looking to make money out of this, we want to make good on our, our debts to Economic Development Division of the Partnership. So if we sell the building, then the hundred thousand from the state becomes a grant, and we can pay off whatever we end up having to owe to the banks. It's extremely complicated, and I, again, I feel very frustrated that we haven't been able to get that, that problem taken care of already. But I'm hopeful that with the city's partnership, we can do that.
Would, Steve, you got any idea when you're gonna have a, a complete cost then?
Like I said, I really hoped that we would have something today, we were waiting for a couple more that said that they would get us something today, but have not heard. So I would love to say that within the next week or so, we'll have a complete layout of, of all the estimates, and we can make a decision which contractor or multiple contractors we're gonna go with.
So the next time we see this is when all that's put together and we have the information from the banks?
Well, and that's, that's up to you, you know, I, I know, and I certainly understand Jim's point, that the city doesn't want to be held liable for 100,000 dollars, and we don't want to see that happen either. So whether the council were to approve this contingent on DPI being able to get the financing, you know, I, I don't know how the language would be crafted, that that could be approved.
So what you can put in here is, Eric, if you want to add another whereas, the Downtown Partners is seeking a letter of credit to back the, the city in, in case the building doesn't sell within that year's timeframe, and then, then a whereas, they're still in the process of getting that letter of credit, then add a second therefore, or modify the, anyway, you have the, the la, the way it ends right now and authorizes the mayor to sign the letter of intent to participate in this program, and I would put just a contingent upon the city's receipt of the letter of credit from.
Yeah.
So then, if you, if you took action, you could have the resolution passing this next time, but you, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be submitting until we got a letter of credit from the bank on that.
All right.
And then in the meantime, that lets us, as soon as we get a contractor nailed down, we can get to the banks, get the thing done.
Yeah, okay. I'm okay with that, what do you guys think?
Anybody else got any questions?
So that July date is firm, or can that move back even further?
I can redo his email if you like, he says...
Isn't that, is that probably reflective of their original grant application time?
No, and see, that's, that's kind of, really, really, one of the many good things about this, this kind of ugly issue, is that Debbie Durham and Della had never met, so they happened to have lunch, hit it off right away, and, and again, Debbie's been very supportive of Main Street programs. And so her proposal is basically use this hundred thousand as discretionary funding, as Eric mentioned, kind of removed from the normal grant cycle, it won't be scored against any other applications that come in, so that, that's a huge point in our favor.
They still have to score it.
They do have to score it, but it won't be scored competitively against others.
Competing.
So, um, let me see if I can get the exact word in here, that's not uploaded yet. But, yeah, Jim Thompson with IEDA said, this is after speaking with their attorneys, that they were flexible with the start date, and they could see it starting July 1st of 2020 with completion required by July 1st of 2021.
Okay. Anybody else?
And I'll add, I guess, most of the contractors we've talked to say this could be roughly six weeks of work, which is why it does take us into, to cold weather. There's a, because it's a complicated problem, and, and there's a lot of issues, not just what you see, but a lot of interior structural issues, we're not just putting bricks back, we have to really take care of the failed structure on the inside there. Some of that work might be able to take place in cold weather, and then the outside gets bundled up in the spring, something like that, so.
Well, I, I know the, the mayor's watching, I assume Annie is too, so you'll have a couple of people that probably ask some more questions as well. You know, I, I'm with you, Matt, I, I would say if we can get the contingency, it's at least worth looking at, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Anything else on that, Jim?
I think that...
Okay, moving on to number four, it's a resolution establishing free parking in certain public parking lots, Mr. Tisland.
This is, excuse me, continuation of a discussion item from previous work session, we have a few resolutions before you for changes to parking, attempt to make improvements to parking in the downtown, with this first one being making underutilized lots as free parking lots, there'd still be the option for the leased areas within the lots, except for the Fifth and Valley, we don't have signs there, but that would be something we could add. Where if someone still wants a 24/7 lease, or a 7:30 to 5:00 lease to guarantee they have a spot and where it's at, they could still lease it, but this would be removal of the pay boxes, so if anyone else wanted to park there, they could park there for free for a 24-hour period, and that 24-hour would incentivize some leases to stay if they wanted, for a business to have their vehicle stay there or guarantee a spot, but would allow free parking for any residents or businesses downtown for that 24-hour period. Currently, we have three leases in the Sixth and Washington parking lot, those are 24/7 leases, no leases in the Fifth and Valley, and I think it's 25 or so in the, 25 or 27, I think in the Third and Washington lot, and I think three or five of those are 24/7, the rest are 7:30 to 5:00. So we potentially would, could lose some leases, but I guess the aim for this is to allow some more dispersed free parking throughout downtown, and then make better use of the lots, and hopefully free up some on-street parking in those areas as well. There are lots that really just sit empty for the most part, especially the Sixth and Washington, Fifth and Valley.
Our overall revenue in the parking fund is, I think, in the 75,000 range or so. We kind of looked at this as if, at least immediately, we would, we think that we'd probably see close to a 20,000 dollar hit in revenue from those, those reserved spots, as well as hourly fees going away in those parking lots. The hourly fees is only, I think, 4,000 or something a year. But we do think that we'll lose a lot of those, specifically at the Third and Washington, the upper ramp, that we'll lose a lot of those immediately. Now, over time, I think that we'll probably see a lot of, or several of them come back, but we, we are looking at this, this isn't a, something that's a decision that doesn't have an impact, it does have a financial impact. We may end up having, I, I think we will end up having to cover a portion of the parking fund cost out of the general fund to, as part of this decision. But it does free up parking, so it makes sense in terms of what we're doing along it, specifically along the Jefferson Street corridor, trying to make sure that you have enough traffic flow to get through there.
Okay.
One, future impact, and we're making changes as the four-to-three hour, we're not looking, we're looking at what's the impact, I guess, today with the Third and Washington, if that developer at the PD's building builds a building there, that could lead to more leases in that area, if you add 30 to 50 units there. So while it is a change today, if development occurs in these areas, as Jim mentioned, there may be some changes or additional leases that are gained back down the road, so nothing here is designed to be static, well, obviously is, if development occurs and the warrant exists to make increased leases or do something else, we'd certainly evaluate that.
What's, what's the status on the lot on, on Seventh? Is that free now? There's not any signage, they're behind a...
It's free.
It's free.
Yeah, we don't have a pay box back there, do we?
No, it, it says free 48 hours there.
Okay.
Yep, the sign should...
Okay.
Eric, how many leased lots did you say were in Third and Washington? Was it 25 or 35?
20, it's 25 or 27, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And this would remain the Fourth and Valley lot, the Main and Valley lots remain as leased. I guess those are mostly, majority leased lots, and those aren't being recommended to change at this time.
But we do have some spots open there that we might build and market.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. Anybody, any questions? Questions?
Good.
Anything else? All right, moving on. Next is resolution for eliminating certain on-street reserve parking spaces.
This kind of goes in with that, evaluating some of the reserved spaces specifically for public or city buildings. Currently, City Hall has three, I believe they're 30-minute, City Hall business-only signs on Fourth Street. We've seen with some of the changes in the, over the years, and then just with the usages, we have a lot of online permits that, a lot of contractors fill out online, and then you can pay online as well, that those really aren't used that often, and if they are, there's still free, free spots around them, whether it's on Washington or Fourth Street, so we'd recommend getting rid of those. For the fire department on 14 Valley, on Valley Street, there is a lot of parking in that area that isn't utilized, this would still retain their police or fire department vehicle parking on Fifth Street, but just on the Valley Street doing with those. And then the post office, eliminating all except the two spaces on the north end, they have quite a bit of parking on Jefferson Street on that side street with the angle parking, where a lot of people can utilize, there is limited parking on Main Street, and they take up a whole block there, but keeping the ones on the north end where people can stop and get their P.O. box, but then freeing up three or four stalls to the south of that. So that's the recommended changes at this time, just for those three locations.
And if I remember, we discussed the ones at the, at the police department, because there is some issues there with people needing access and protection. Okay. Anybody have any questions? No? All right, moving on. Number six is resolution for establishing parking fine amount.
So this was something we looked at in conjunction with the free parking lots, if we're allowing more free parking throughout downtown, we really want to encourage the use of that, especially for workers or residents downtown. And then evaluated what our parking fee was, looking at comparable communities, the average is right around 15 dollars, there are some differences, some communities still have the meters, which they have a, a smaller rate, but those turn over a little bit more, and then some communities increase the fee if you don't pay within, whether it's 48 hours or 72 hours or a week, but the average of the ones, our comparable communities, is 15 dollars, so we're looking at going to 10 to 15 in conjunction with making those lots free, kind of that incentive to move into those lots where there's less need to park on the street, and kind of coming in line with what some other communities' charges are.
It's an incentive to park in the free lot.
Did we talk at one time about giving a grace period if it was a very first ticket and they're from out of town, or am I just fabricating this?
We talked about doing a graduated system, and also whether you're out of town, that's something Lieutenant Thompson was looking at some costs for a handheld device that would make that easier, it's something that would be very difficult to do right now.
Right now, we use an Excel spreadsheet, and it's not one that makes it easy to do that. But, but again, if we're able to, at some point, get to where we have a little bit more software-dependent system, that becomes a little bit easier to, to have happen, because we think it makes sense, or your parking committee did too, it's just, how do you do it in a way that's practical?
And cost-effective, some of the, one initial cost was five or 10,000 dollars, and that might not make sense, but are there other options that are more cost-effective to do that? So we did, you know, talk about the graduated fine system and the free first-time offenders, but until we get that system in place, we're not recommending that. One thing with this, we did recommend going into effect January 1st, so that gives time to make the free lots and get out a brochure before we increase the fines, and our goal is, if these all, changes are all made, we'll get that brochure out to the downtown businesses and residents, and then get it posted, and get that word out, and then not have a fine increase until January 1st, so that gives a little more grace period for that, too.
Any other questions?
Well, one thing's for sure, we'll still be talking about parking next year as well.
All right, moving on to the proposed consent agenda, resolution for approving nuisance abatements for various properties, anybody see anything there? No? Linda, no? Number two is resolution establishing a no-parking area east side of the 200 block of South Woodlawn Avenue, Mr. McGregor.
The resolution in front of you would create a no-parking zone in the pinked-out area of South Woodlawn, by request of a property owner in the, in, on the block. We investigated it, we reached out to the property owners that are adjacent to the request, all but one said that they were fine with that going into effect. It is a 24-foot wide road with parking currently allowed on both sides, it is difficult to get down in a vehicle, but then once you consider emergency vehicles and snowplows and whatnot, it, it is difficult to do, so see no reason why we, we shouldn't approve this type of request, so recommend approval.
Recommended by staff.
Can you elaborate why the, the one naysayer, they use the parking or...
I didn't speak with him, just wasn't forward or something.
Get it's narrowed through there.
Okay.
Matt?
Good.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Next one is number three, resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington and Iowa, and the City Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Horizon Street, Nick.
Horizon Street is the, is the roadway that was created in the new development by Dan Cahill. The roadway and the lights have been in function for quite a while. We, we did a resolution to accept the infrastructure, however, Alliant requires a resolution separately to be done to accept the, the two streetlights to be put onto the city's tab, and that's all that this resolution is, so.
Are you okay with the lights that were put in?
They're wood poles with LED.
Okay.
They're cheap and they get the job done.
We're not gonna have a development coming back in 10 years wanting us to change everything?
No. No.
All right. Any questions?
You may.
The next one is number four, a resolution approving a side agreement between the CWA Local 7176 and the City of Burlington.
So this one's pretty straightforward, we're looking to increase our signing bonus for certified officers from 6,000 to 8,000 dollars.
Okay.
An attempt to...
How many people were interested when, at the 6,000 this last, last round?
Zero.
It's just hard to get an officer, to attract an officer from another community, it saves an awful lot of money, our cost now through Academy is...
The Academy costs right now are about 10,000 dollars to send somebody to the Academy, that's the, it's 10,000 dollars to pay for the Academy, but then we also have to pay their salary for four months while they're at the Academy.
Right.
So if we can recruit or encourage already certified officers to come to our department and work, they have an, obviously, there's no Academy cost, there's also no paying their salary for four months while they're at the Academy, and then on top of that, their FTO process, instead of being three and a half to four months long, is usually shortened based on their tenure, their experience, by about six to eight weeks. So all in total, there's quite a savings, but we're going... So all in total, there's quite a savings, but we're going from six thousand, eight thousand to see if we can't maybe entice some certified officers to come in.
Major, is our retention ratio in line with what other departments' retention ratios are as far as employees, say, one to seven years on the job?
Yeah, it's, you know, we have conversations with a lot of departments around the state and around the country, and we're finding that in law enforcement in general, there's a, a more frequent turnover than what there used to be, and there's a whole lot of reasons for that, so.
One, one thing that's been pointed out, what would, is if you have someone who goes through a training program here, and three years down the road decides to look somewhere else, if they were to go to look at the Des Moines Metro, do you have an idea how much, what the pay difference might be?
Right now, there's approximately eight to twelve thousand dollars difference in pay range. Between us and the metro areas, can be upwards, depending upon the department, as much as fifteen to twenty thousand, but the average is probably that eight to twelve thousand.
Is that consistent with all tenure, or just at the...
Yes. That's from your initial starting pay through your, what we call a top pay. Typically, a ten-year service.
And even as you look at our, our pay scale versus an Atumwa or Marshalltown, Ford Dodge, Mason City, some more of our comparable sizes, you probably see a little bit of pay disparity even there.
Right now, from Burlington to Atumwa, which is probably the, the best comparable, our officers, I think, right now are between eight and ten thousand dollars less in pay.
Than Atumwa?
Than Atumwa, yes.
So I, I would say that's probably one of our largest, if you want to look at system, system-wide problems with our system right now.
How many openings do you have right now?
We're going to have three openings. We have two right now, soon to be three.
How many will you have expected next year?
Two.
And of the five that you're going to hire, how many statistically would you expect to be on the department six years from now, given what our current retention ratio is?
Eighty percent.
So we'll be hiring another one of those positions in the next year?
Probably.
Or in the next six years?
Probably.
We've struggled over the last, last year just maintaining staff. Last, we, we're sending two candidates per cycle, three, so three, three schools at ILAA, two people each, each one, and that's your, really the maximum you can...
Well, we anticipated two retirements this year. We anticipated and budgeted four, two retirements. And I think we're at number six or number seven right now that we're hiring this fiscal year, which, you know, creates a lot of issues. But, you know, I think it, it should be noted that it's, although we've had some officers in the past leave from one department and go to another department, the majority this year have just left law enforcement altogether. They've just, they've taken other careers in other fields, they've walked away from law enforcement.
That's tough. When you said we were down two, soon to be three, you kind of cracked a smile. What would that third person, would that third person be?
We don't know for sure, we're just hearing that right now, so.
Come my eye on you, Major. Well, does anybody have any questions? It seems to me like it's...
Does it give you keep giving it free T-shirts?
I don't know, that's my brother, my brother did those.
Yeah, we know someone that works at Cal.
Is that how it works? Anybody else, any questions? Well, I guess, so from my perspective, I look at it and say, well, we're, we're paying for their training, there's a, there's a learning curve, it costs a lot of money to put an FTO on the road with a training officer, so does it make sense to try and cut the, the pay gap between, and this is a next budget cycle problem, but I'm thinking, does it make sense to try and figure out how to cut that gap a little bit so that we're, have better retention, and perhaps cut our costs from a training standpoint?
So, I know there's...
We're spending it somewhere. We're spending it on current officers, new officers.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's more to it than that. I mean, you can throw all the money you want at it, and I know people are going to say, why did he say that? But there's, there's other issues rather than just pay, as to why people are leaving law enforcement as a career choice.
Yeah, when they're leaving the field anyway.
They're leaving the field.
You're going to have some of that, but is there something else outside of pay that, that we should, this group should be looking at, that we're not?
I, I don't, I'm sure, I mean, there's lots of things we can look at, I don't know that this is the venue right now, because that'll keep people here till eight o'clock tonight, so.
So, so as a group, we're, the three of us were okay with that, with that agreement, side agreement? Is that what you're looking for, Jim?
Yeah. And, and when you, as you get into those issues, so that's, the dynamics of law enforcement are just tougher than they used to be. It's, it's a tough field.
I mean, when I applied in nineteen eighty-seven, they were hiring nobody at that time, and there was over a hundred applicants. I think it was like closer to a hundred and fifty, and they were hiring nobody. We're going to hire three people in December of this year, and we're going to be testing next week, and I think last I heard was we got seventeen applications.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
And what's typically your percentage that makes it through the vetting process to physicals and physical agility through the psych...
About twenty percent.
So I actually tested back in two thousand six or seven, right after I got out of the service, there was over a hundred.
Mm-hmm. That's changed. Lots of mom and dads telling their kids they're not going into law enforcement these days, so.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks, Major. Thanks. Next is number five, resolution approving the purchase, purchase of a Heil, I guess that's the way you say it, automated front loader garbage truck with a Corato can. Corato, corato, corato? Is that right? Corato, okay.
You said eight o'clock?
You were aware that Don was behind you, right? You were trying to save time.
Okay, I had a little presentation put together because I wanted to build on a little bit of history to get to where we're at today. Solid waste department is what we're talking about. Currently, we have semi-automated trucks, or referred to as semi-automated, and the question is, is do we stay fully semi-automated the entire fleet, or do we look at buying a fully automated truck? We are budgeted for a truck this fiscal year, and the question is, is which way do we go? Next slide. It was in November of twenty eighteen, a year ago, that we went to the city-owned wheeled trash carts of the directional council. We took our rear-load twenty-yard packers, and we retrofitted them with cart tippers so we could manage and, and collect trash from those trash carts. We currently have a fleet of seven rear-load packers. The oldest one is twenty-one years, the newest one is four years old. Our current staffing level is we have seven full-time employees and one part-time. Next slide. Maybe you have an interest in knowing what the distribution through the community is. These are approximate numbers, there may be some houses that have two carts, I'm not sure if these are customers or simply the cart count, but as you can see, we have approximately twenty-eight hundred of our thirty-five gallon carts out there, we have fifty-six hundred sixty-five gallon carts, and we have about twelve hundred ninety-five gallon carts. Next slide. Okay, so semi-auto collection using the rear loader with cart tippers is a slower than manual and fully automated collection. It takes more time. Same thing with talking about leaves, taking a bag and throwing it in the truck and on your way. When you're talking about carts, you're pulling the cart to the back of the truck, you're hooking it up, you're pulling a lever, it tips, you have to push that cart back to where you took it from to begin with. It's slower than manual, and it's certainly slower than a fully automated collection. Next slide. So this is a slide that was in my budget presentation at the, in January of twenty nineteen. And then on that slide, as you can see, I asked, or proposed that the citywide cleanup be changed to a bulky item only. That did not occur, the council did not support that. I asked for the elimination allowance of trash cans and carts for leaf collection. The council did support me on that eventually, and we're very thankful for that, we think that is a good move. We also, I also commented that I wanted to add one more crew member versus going to a hybrid program. If we were going to stay with rear loaders, semi, semi-auto collection, then I felt we should add one more person to our program. The alternative to that would be to have a hybrid program, which would be that last bullet where we would add a fully automated truck rather than staying with rear loads only. But with fully automated trucks, oftentimes, communities are looking at changing from alley collection to curbside, so that's why that's there. Some communities have gone fully from alley collection to curbside so they could effectively use the fully automated truck. Next slide. So there are some pluses with the fully automated truck. More served in the same amount of time than served by semi-auto. As I said, semi-auto is the slowest means of collection. Fully automated collection is the fastest. You can collect from more houses, more households in the same timeframe with a fully automated truck than you can with a semi-automated collection. Another positive plus is that routinely, there's only one person that's on a fully automated truck. That's typically all they have. Semi-automated collection like we do, it's very common for communities to have, always have, two people on that truck, sometimes three, a person's driving, and there's two people that ride on the back steps. Here in Burlington with our program and the staffing that we have, it's not uncommon for us to have at least half of our trucks out there with just one person. And when we're running our specialty programs like leaf collection or citywide cleanup, there's typically several trucks that are out at the same time, some of them have only one person on it. Another plus for the fully automated is routinely the operator remains in the cab. He's able to use a joystick to operate an arm that collects the cart, and by doing so, he stays out of traffic. Believe it or not, there are some people who drive pretty fast past service vehicles. We've had a couple of men come close to get hit, but they haven't fortunately been hit. Solid waste collection is considered a very unsafe or dangerous occupation because they are if they're out working on the streets in the traffic. The other benefit of staying in the cab is that the surfaces of alleys and streets can have potholes, can have loose material, can be slippery in the winter or when it's wet out. So someone staying in the cab and operating from within, that lessens the likelihood of some type of an injury. Next slide. There are also minuses associated with fully automated collection. Purchase price of a fully automated vehicle is more than the rear loader. The annual maintenance costs associated with fully automated trucks is usually higher. Not in all cases, there is certain types of fully automated trucks that do real well at maintaining the cost similar to a rear load. There's a greater potential for property damage, especially if you're doing collection in alleys, but even out on the streets, because you are operating an arm and you are grabbing the cart. If you're in an alley, you can catch the eve of a garage, there's a lot of vehicles and things parked in alleys along the alleyways as well as out on the street. You have trees, there's, so there's a lot of potential for damage relies on the operator of the vehicle to be very, very careful and be very aware of what's going around, on, around him. There's, these trucks typically are less maneuverable. They're typically a larger truck than what you would normally use, and because of that, they're longer, so they're not as maneuverable getting in and out of alleys or getting out of tight spots. They, they're difficult to operate. Next slide. Some additional minuses, the more households that you serve means that there's more weight on that particular truck, resulting in more weight on streets and alleys. Now, that can be moderated by how many axles and how many wheels and what size of the tires you have on the truck. So it may not be as major of a concern as what one might conclude from that particular bullet, but it is true. You're getting a bigger truck, you're gonna, you don't want to, if you don't want to make that trip to the landfill and come back and go back on the route and start over again, all depends upon the location of the landfill relative to your routes. Some cities have landfills right there in town or on the edge, and others, you got to drive a distance. And do you have time to go all the way out, sit in line, unload, turn around, go back, and start collecting again to use the efficiency of that truck? Typically, what they do is they get bigger trucks so they don't have to make more than one round trip. Downtime means loss of efficiency. Some departments and some communities automatically will start cutting the size of their crews because we have a more efficient truck. When that truck goes down, they have to have means to make up for that lost efficiency, whether it be a spare truck, or they have the personnel available, or whatever they do, but it means loss of efficiency. Efficiency is relying on the customer cooperation. I don't know how many times I will have heard where people from other communities are surprised that we will go back and pick up a cart that's called in by a person that says, well, you missed me, or I forgot to set it out, I didn't get it out in time, can you come back? Orientation and location of carts following the rules is very important if you want to maximize the efficiency of a fully automated truck, because again, the man is intended to stay inside the cab, not have to get out, go move the cart, reposition it, put a violation tag on it, whatever he's going to do. So you, your efficiency is reliant on how well the customer cooperates. We did three trials with three different trucks, we had three different professional drivers, if you will, come into our community to work with our people during those demos, and they commented, well, you're going to have to train and teach your customers to put their carts where you can access them. And what you do is you go out and you put a tag on, you say, please put your cart out next week when you set it out at this location where I've set your cart. And if they don't, many communities just leave the cart and don't attempt to pick it up. I think that would be something that would be very unpopular in Burlington. I do think that we'd get fifty percent or better participation and cooperation, but what about the other people that say, I'm not going to move my cart over there? Alley set-out location changed to curbside in some cases. There are communities who have moved everybody entirely from alley to curbside, others are selective based on needs only, but that is likelihood in the City of Burlington where we will have to move some customers from alley to curbside to utilize the truck effectively. If carts are on both sides of the alley, then what you have is the truck has to go out down the alley, assuming it's open at both ends. They go all the way through the alley once to pick up to one side, and they won't, eventually they have to make the pass going in the other direction. So you're putting that weight of that truck through that alley twice a week instead of once a week with semi-automated. I did hear of a community who told their customers that they, they, the people on this side of alley had to move their carts over to the other side of the alley, so that they're all on the same side so you make one pass-through. I also heard that there was a big revolt, a lot of people showed up at the council meeting to complain about that. I don't know what the outcome of that situation was. The Public Works Director was relatively new to the community, he made that decision to change it, I don't know if he's still there or not. Okay, so that's another minus associated with fully automated programs. Next slide. So budget considerations. At budget time, as I had indicated in the earlier slide, I said, well, we, I could use an extra person. If we stayed semi-automated with the exact programs that we have, takes more time, I'd like to see an extra person within the program. A full-time person right now for refuse driver one would be seventy-seven thousand six hundred dollars a year. A part-time person would be $39,600 approximately, depending on, well, various things. So, pertaining to the garbage truck itself, if we want to go for a fully automated loader, the particular truck that I am interested in after our trials and consideration of numerous factors is $338,336. If we were to buy a rear loader, which as I said, we are budgeted for a truck this year, we do need to get back on our program to where we're buying trucks at a regular basis. Rear loader with tippers, semi-automated collection would be approximately $220,000 making the price difference to go up to a fully automated truck of $118,336. Now, that's a lot of money, but also you have to look at the personnel costs. And that is an annual cost versus the cost of difference for the two trucks. That truck will last us several years. I'm guessing it will last for 10, possibly 12 years. Next slide. So, as I mentioned earlier, we tried three fully automated loaders. We demoed three. They came in with a professional driver that worked with one of our people, and we took it on the same route each of the times that we brought a truck in, so we'd see all three in the same circumstances. Two of the trucks we tried were automated side loaders. That's the typical truck that you see out there that in most communities where the arm comes out with the claw, grabs the cart and dumps it into the top of the truck. We tried one automated front loader. That is a different kind of an animal. I personally was not really familiar with it until the salesman came in and spoke with me, and we did demo one of those trucks on the same route. Next slide. So, the proposed purchase is I'm recommending and the resolution that you have in your packet is to purchase an automated front loader. That is the most expensive of the three trucks. The city, CIP for fiscal year 20 has $275,000 in it. Next slide. Here's a picture, this is an automated front loader. You've probably seen them out on the streets. Commercial haulers use them to dump dumpsters. Those two forks come down, they run those into pockets that are on either side of various sized containers, and they raise them up and they dump them into the top. That's the hopper right there. Next slide. This is the Corrado can. As you can see, it's on the front forks of the automated, the fully front loader, the automated front loader. That is the system that I'm proposing. A front loader with a Corrado can on it. Next slide. Here's a side view with the cart, the thing on there that's on the forks. You can see the cab. Here's a 12-yard hopper, and there's the body back here. The truck that we're looking at is a 23-yard cubic yard Packer body with a 12-yard hopper and the Corrado can. Next slide. And this is another view, this is where the cart, the Corrado can has been raised over the top and it's sitting inside the 12-yard hopper. Next slide. Here's one of the, a picture of the demo that was performed in Burlington. You can see there's a vehicle parked along the curb. The truck is angled in, the arm has come out, it's grabbed the cart. It's a process of drop or dumping into the four-and-a-half-yard Corrado can. And you would pick up several houses dumping carts into the Corrado can before you would eventually raise that can up and dump it into the top of the truck. Next slide. So, the question that we had before the council has posed at budget time was, "Do we stay with the semi-automated collection, which involves a rear loader that's been outfitted with cart tippers and provide an extra person as I've requested? Or do you want to go to what most communities have been doing, moving from rear loads to fully automated trucks? And in this case, I'm asking for the automated front loader." And that's the resolution that you had before you.
Any, any questions, Gane?
I'm okay with doing what Don's proposed. I was just chatting with Jim here for a second. We're trying to figure out, I was trying to figure out what the cart program has done financially for solid waste. And it looks like revenue is up, expenses are up a little bit too, but it looks, I know there was some cost in there with regard to the cans. So, from a, from a revenue standpoint, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've made enough on the truck, cart program so far to be able to cover these additional costs, not even including the fact that we're not paying for an additional driver, right?
Well, we, we, we did skip the purchase. The last time we purchased a truck was in, in 2015. We, we paid for a truck in the end of the calendar year of 2015. Usually we, the, the schedule we were on was once every two years, and I'm not sure if it evolved to once every three years, but we're behind on buying a truck. We definitely should get a truck this year.
What I can say about the revenues, when we did the, the switch last year, we weren't sure what to expect out of sign-ups, subscriptions with the different 35, 65, or 95 gallons. And what we did get for subscriptions to those, our revenue was, was enough higher that we were able to keep from having to do a rate increase this last year. If we'd have been under the other, if we'd have stayed with our old programs, we would have been proposing a 25 cent increase as we had in previous years. Just, and that's to keep up with the cost of your higher personnel costs, your higher tipping fees out at the landfill.
Equipment costs.
Equipment costs.
So, this, this does not use the hook on the cart to pick it up? It's using a claw action, is that what we saw?
Yes, the Corrado can, as does the side loader, it has an arm that comes out. In this case, the arm is attached to the Corrado can on the space between the can and the front of the truck. And that arm comes out and grabs the cart and dumps it. Couple of comments pertaining to the community as a whole and professional drivers. They said, "You have a very difficult community to operate a fully automated truck in." They said, they were surprised, about 50% of our collection is in alleys. There's a lot of terraced properties here. We have some nice wide alleys, but we also have some very, very narrow alleys with a lot of issues with landscaping and parked vehicles and such. And so, it's getting a fully automated truck, whether you went with a side loader or whether you go with the Corrado can. Efficiency, as I said, is dependent on customers doing the thing. I mean, if they place the cart against the garage underneath the eaves, it's not gonna be something that's easy to do, at least with some of the collection vehicles. The person who operates the truck, that's not something, the guys that we dealt with had been doing it 20 years, they were very, very slick with the vehicle. They said, "You're not gonna be able to perform in the same effective manner and efficient manner we are currently until you've spent some time in the truck doing this." It's, it's just like any other type of piece of equipment. In this case, it takes person, depending on which truck you get, it takes a person to use that truck day after day, week after week, different weather conditions to become efficient. And again, there's a learning process for him. There's also a learning process or training for customers. There may be some customers that we have to encourage strongly. You have to get your cart set at a different place in order for us to effectively use this fully automated truck. This truck is not coming with a low entry cab as what we have now. It doesn't have stand-up drive. The man is in a seat, he can climb down out of the truck just like construction truck drivers do that, but if you're climbing in and out and in and out, in and out, you're gonna wear down very, very quickly. The Corrado can allows the pickup of bulky items. Our current program allows the set-out of a bulky item throughout the year as long as you have the proper number of trash tags attached to it. And with the Corrado can being low-profile, he can get out of the truck, he can put it in that Corrado can. Sofas, overstuffed chairs, various items, and rely on the mechanics to put that into the hopper when that can is ready to be emptied. It's one of the things with the side loaders, the shelf to get it in there is up high, and it's just not practical for many bulky items. You can't get, the guy can't get it in there, so you'd have to file, you'd have to arrange for a follow truck, call somebody off from another route or the next day, make a list of addresses to say, "We need you to go out there and pick up this sofa here and these mattresses there," and so on and so forth.
How much, how much of the price tag that you presented is the Corrado can?
I asked what a extra Corrado can would cost, and I believe it was like 30, between $32,000 and $33,000.
Okay.
Some communities do that if they only have one truck because if that system goes down, not to lose the efficiency, they disconnect from the Corrado can and they slide into the next one. He recommended that, that we need not pursue that, at least at this time.
And what's the lifespan of that part? Because it looks like it's got a lot of moving parts in it, so.
I believe he felt that we would probably get somewhere between five to eight years out of that Corrado can.
Any, any questions? All right, no, don't hate the messenger, but I'm sure this question's gonna be asked. If we go with a Corrado can, then can people use their old trash cans for leaf pickup?
No.
Okay, I'm just, it's gonna be asked, so I'll put it out there. Having questions, Linda? No, Matt? Anything else?
I got a lot of information. It's not 8 o'clock yet.
I thought I read somewhere that this system did not last as long as the semi-automated. Was I imagining that?
Fully automated trucks as a whole in general, that's true. They do not last as long as rear loads. This truck is a commercial truck. The side loaders, when they dump, they have a very small hopper, hopper similar in size to our current size hopper. Their packing mechanisms have to work probably three, four, five, six times more frequently than what the packing mechanism on this truck does. This truck is a very heavy-duty truck and it should last a long time. But you're correct that a lot of fully automated trucks, they do not last. In fact, the last I'd heard, there was a community who has experience with side loaders and they definitely are replacing the truck every five years. We have trucks that we use and are fairly reliable that are at 20 years old. But we put money into maintenance wise, too.
All right, any other questions? I think, I think you answered most of them. Let's see what the other two think. Okay, thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Uh, next is, we're gonna, we'll set a date for a public hearing, November 4th, and that's consideration for plans and specifications of Lewis, Lewis Street Repair. We did remove the discussion item, parking passes, to allow, to get the other two council members here. And then future, future discussion items would be the fire department's annual report. Anything else from staff for tonight?
So, I sent out a press release today from the fire department. I don't know if you got a chance to read it, but just, we're excited that we were chosen by the National Fire Protection Association for a pilot program called the Community Risk Assessment. And basically what it's gonna do, it's gonna create a, it's called a digital, a digital dashboard. It's like a, a real-time display of our risks in our community, fire EMS risks. It's, the thing that makes it really cool is, for one, we've been looking at different software that allows us to use the data that we already spend a lot of time putting into the computer, and then it analyzes that and it says, you know, "For Burlington, Iowa, here's your risks." And then that allows us to take our limited, you know, people power and money and direct our prevention efforts towards where we, it'll make the biggest difference. So, it's gonna use our, our run data. It also uses a lot of census data as far as the geography of the town, the, the makeup of the town, the housing stock, the age, what type of housing stock, whether we have rentals or, or homeowner-owned houses, stuff like that. Does all that and puts together a, a digital dashboard. We had looked at some just not too long ago, it was from a company called My Sidewalk, which coincidentally is the company that the NFPA is using to create their, this program. So, for about a year, we'll be sharing our data, our fire data. It's a seamless thing. They're gonna look at five years' worth of our data and create these digital dashboards. So, they're, they're saying the program's worth about $7,000 overall. So, it's, it's nice, that's parts-free. We'll see where it goes from there after a year, if it's something we keep doing or not, so.
Cool, sounds good.
Yeah. And while I'm up here, can I just talk about parking?
What?
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was, I was really glad to say, somebody said we might have to look at it again in a year because I've already told Eric, right now, it's great. I have no problems with the, the resolutions that are put forward. However, in a year from now, if that apartment opens up across from the fire station and they're, it looks really cool, we went on a couple tours of it, it's gonna be really neat. They're wanting to put commercial on the bottom floor. That could totally change the parking around the fire station. So, we've always, that parking lot at Fifth and Valley up until a year ago had been free parking and we'd always had, never had a problem finding a place to park. So, that, and then the, the, the fire department business parking. Right now, there's, it's convenient only, there's never anybody parked on that street, so it's not a big deal to, to give those up. So, I'm not sure who mentioned that, looking at it in a year again, but.
We're never gonna stop looking at parking. It's gonna be a, thankfully, it's going to be an ongoing issue because we have had some resurgence in our downtown. So, I don't think anything's ever firmly put to bed. You know, we're gonna end up continuing to tweak it.
Yeah, as we continue to develop the tiger plan and implement that process over the next four or five years, I mean, it's something that's gonna be ever-evolving.
But yeah, I could see where your concerns are on that, either.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right.
Anything else?
Yeah, um, do you have something?
Yeah. Just a reminder, City Days is Saturday, October 19th, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Depot down on Main Street. So, we'll have some information on city services, I think some city vehicles, and hopefully some fun items for families and kids to come out and enjoy as well, learn a little bit more about the city and how it functions and, yeah, some games, door prizes, and fun learning about the different cities, departments. So, we encourage people to come on down to the Depot. It's a change of venue this year. We've had it at the park the last few years. I think we changed it. Potential anticipation of the pool project. If that had moved forward, that would have been our normal location, so. But they'll get to explore the Depot this year a little bit more too. So, encourage people to come out this Saturday, 1:00 to 3:00 down at the Depot on Main Street. And then, as Don was talking about, trash, our one-day-only trash drop-off, looking to do that on October 29th from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the parking lot south of Auditorium. This again is kind of the dumpster program where individuals can come down, show their water bill that they're a city resident or paying customer. They can unload their trash in those dumpsters themselves. It is a self-dump. We don't have personnel to help unload, especially bulky items. Do not accept the normal items, that trash doesn't accept TVs. Some of those items that are on the do-not-bring list, appliances, batteries, TV, tires, demo material, electronics, TVs and computers, so. But if you have some of your items that you might have missed for spring cleanup or just over the summer that accumulated and want to get rid of, bring it down, October 29th from 10:00 to 6:00. 10:00 to 6:00.
You attended the, a community forum at the loft this last week?
Yes, I did. It was, it was, it was well attended. We had 50 people. What was surprising was there, there was a transition. There were some members that were there before, but there was a lot of members that went, went there the first time. So that continues to grow. I think the next one is November 7th at the same location.
And Linda, you had asked a question about a specific garage. So in one of the things, talking with Eric and their department downstairs, they, they go through, they, they have a full list of different properties that they've targeted that need to be addressed. And in order to give a good contextual answer for what's going on, where that specific garage stands, I asked Eric to do a presentation for this group at the next work, potentially next work session. Kind of give an idea of what, what we have on the list, what we've been able to accomplish, what's sitting out there. The garage in particular that you're asking about is not anywhere near the top of the list for, but to do, to get, to adequately answer that, it's kind of given an answer, given some pictures of what we have that, of things that are out there that need done. And then to put it into perspective is how limited of funds that we have set aside and if we wanna be more aggressive towards that, that would ask for us to set more aside in the next year's budget, so.
Now I look forward for that and it'll be good. Informational for me.
Talking about demolition and we got a bid for one house, it's $14,000 and we've allocated $20,000 annually for.
Thirty, we increased that to thirty.
For thirty, yeah. So and that's what it takes to do one property, so. And garages are separate, but they all tie together, so.
Especially if they're attached. Council candidate forum is next Tuesday night, so those people keep, just a reminder to make sure you keep involved in that process. And that was it for what I have.
And then what time was that forum next Tuesday?
I don't know. I was afraid that that was gonna be the question. I would say it's either 5:30 or 6:00, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I thought it's here.
It would be, yes.
It's here. I thought they were seven last time. That's all right. We'll find out. It'll be on TV. All right.
Okay. Sounds good. I had something real quick.
Were you done?
Yes, I was done.
Okay. Wanted to give a big shout out to everybody that helped support Downtown Partners Project. We had a lot of fun at the one and only fundraiser last week, so wanted to thank everyone for buying tickets and going to that. And don't forget, this weekend is Hetta Gilbert sale. H-E-T-T-A Gilbert. This goes to fund children who may not have their medical needs paid for and we're really looking for children that need some dental health work done. So if you know a child, a grandchild that needs some dental work done and they can't, family has trouble paying for those bills, contact a school nurse or contact someone at Hetta Gilbert and we'll try to get them some help for that. I just learned this week that your oral health is highly linked to your nutritional status. So I know this isn't city business, but I found it really enticed, really interesting. So if you do not take care of your teeth, you run a 50% greater chance of having high blood pressure. So now you guys know, 50% greater chance. So take care of your teeth.
Do you have anything, Matt?
Go pack, go.
Go, whatever. Well, the only, the, the only thing, yeah, it did. The only thing I would have is just a reminder with moving the parking pass discussion, that'll be the 28th to those of you that showed up tonight. We really appreciate you coming and sorry we couldn't get that done. Anybody who'd like to be here, that'll be the night we discuss parking passes. Other than that, have a great.